Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for being with us today. Today is a special workshop meeting of the Prescott City Council. Today is Tuesday, March 24th, 2015. Roll call, please.
Mayor Kirkandall.
Here.
Mayor Protem Kukneal.
Here.
Councilman Arnold.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
He'll be momentarily.
Councilman Lamerson.
Here.
Councilman Lozelle.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
You have a call.
Okay. This is a continuation of our workshop on the 2015 draft general plan. So, George?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the third workshop scheduled for you in discussion of the update to the general plan. We have one additional workshop scheduled. That workshop will include a representation to you of all of the various changes you suggested to us during this process or requested during this process. It will also include some additional information that you requested relating to certain topics like the form-based code question that came up and some others that came up during the last two meetings. During this workshop, we intend to cover the last four elements of the plan. There is actually a fifth element, which I'll discuss very briefly at the end, which is truly not an element. It's really just the process set out for amending the plan once it's been readopted and ratified by the voters. The first section to be addressed today is our environmental planning element. This element addresses issues that are associated with air, surface water quality, things that are particularly associated with activities in and around the community that are under the control, hopefully, of the community as part of the process. The lakes management plan is one of the issues that we'll talk about, as well as air and dark sky requirements. One of the issues that came up during the committee's review but had very little attention by the Planning Commission was the air quality section. There was a great deal of discussion about whether or not significant changes should be made to it, and ultimately, very few changes were made. We do recommend a number of things associated with air quality that were in the 2003 plan. The committee reaffirmed them and left them in this plan. For water quality, a lot of the discussion that occurred both at the committee and at Planning Commission was related to the lakes themselves, particularly Watson and Willow Lakes. Those are joint-use facilities. They provide water storage, but they're also a recreational amenity, and there was some discussion about the quality of the water in those lakes, particularly associated with the recreational activities that are part of their use. As with the other elements of the plan, there are goals that are associated with certain parts of these last four elements. In particular, there was a request for, or a suggestion for, a review and update of the lakes management plan. That's something that several of the committee members have paid particular attention to during the process of updating the plan. They had, they spent a lot of time reviewing various issues associated with those management plan, and that is a recommendation in here to explore that at some point in the future. The other issue that came up with a fair amount of discussion was the dark sky requirements that we include in our land development code, the zoning code for the city. The dark sky requirements help us maintain a relatively dark sky while providing safety lighting for streets and in neighborhoods. There's a balance to be found in the approach that the plan takes, the recommendations the plan takes. But one of the issues that's come up recently is a keeping up with technology-related issue, and that is, how do we handle LED lighting that is now very popular because it's extremely energy-saving? Many communities have adopted the allowance for LED lighting in parking lots because it saves so much electricity. LEDs require a tenth or less of the required electricity as compared to our previous lighting schemes, which generally involve high-pressure sodium lights for parking lots. So one of the things we wanted to address is, how do we handle those in relation to keeping the dark sky requirements in place? Because LEDs are variable. You can get different colors. You can get different brightnesses associated with them. So the committee recommended that we look at specific color-temperature allowances. LEDs and lighting in general can be measured in a temperature of the light, and there are certain criteria that have been established by the International Lighting Engineers Association. And we would propose to look at future modifications to the land development code to address LED lighting and allow it because of its benefit to the business community specifically, but also to perhaps the city itself in using LED lighting for our street lighting.
LED and dark sky can go hand-in-hand, though, couldn't they?
Yes. One of the issues that have to be addressed is how bright and what color the lights are permitted to be. Generally, the high-pressure sodium lighting that we see most of the time is sort of an orange-yellowish color, and that actually is very good for dark sky requirements. It allows for very little light spillage into the atmosphere and provides safety lighting at the street level. LED lighting can be tuned or designed to be at that same color-temperature level, and that's one of the things that we want to verify and to address in our land development code at some point. One of the other issues that came up in discussion, and you've actually heard some discussion of it in previous, one of our previous workshops when we were talking about open space, is the issue of wildlife corridors and connectivity of those wildlife corridors. They are mentioned again in the environmental planning element primarily because they are multi-use. It's not just a wildlife corridor. They're generally green spaces. They're generally drainages. They're things that will, that help, if they're properly managed and protected, they help water quality as well as providing for wildlife corridors. So that was one of the other issues that came up during the review process by the committee, not much by the Planning Commission. There are very few changes, again, to this entire element. So the next was probably the least controversial of all of our elements, the water element. And just to start it off, I wanted to put up a map of the Prescott AMA, just to give you a general reference to the overall size of it and the communities and the amount of space they occupy within that AMA area. As you can see, there are four major communities in the area. Prescott probably occupies a slightly larger ground area than the others, but very slightly larger.
George, I'm sorry, before we continue in the water, can we go back to page 74, please? Dark sky goals and implementation strategies?
Oops, sorry, I've got the wrong page. My numbers were off just slightly because of some edits. Yes, sir.
Looking at the goal and then the listed strategies and knowing where we've tried to address some of these in the past, and a couple of these strategies haven't been able to make it out of the UDC committee as recommendations, I'd like to get a little bit more background on our thoughts related to strategy 1.1, 1.2, 1.3, and then specifically strategy 5. To me, that sounds like a pretty specific direction. I'd rather it be generalized to say, you know, something along the lines, instead of retrofit all city facilities, make that more general, that as needed, adjust city facilities or as replacement occurs.
Okay.
That could be a huge ticket item if somebody were to come out with a strategic plan and say, "We're going to replace every single light in the city today." And I don't know that that would be the intent. I think it should be more, as we're going in and doing repairs, replacements, that should be our goal.
It was my understanding from the discussion at the committee level that that was their concept. It didn't make it into the text specifically, but as facilities are revised, reviewed, improved, that they would be upgraded to use the best technology available, again, balanced as part of the cost process that council has to review and any of the budgets associated with those things.
Certainly. So again, I think in 1.5, I'm looking for something more general that doesn't necessarily just flat-out say retrofit all, because that, to me, sounds like a direction to go do every light. And as far as the strategies related to the code, you know, it's a good strategy and it's a direction we need to move in, but again, for four years, it hasn't been able to garner enough support to move in that direction. So I think looking at, instead of it necessarily being our code, it can become part of our planning process. Does that make sense? With somebody that's coming in and doing a proposal for something new, we tie that into that area.
My question would be, and I agree with Charlie, whether it comes through the code or generally speaking, is initiated in this section of the general plan would be like base of school that comes into a neighborhood, and all of a sudden, they become a light issue for not only the neighborhood because they're infiltrating into a residential community. How we bring commercial and residential together and make sure that those lights that are at the commercial facility are engineered in a way where only specific lights are on after a certain time of the evening? Because I, from my standpoint, it's a chicken-and-the-egg thing. Who comes first and who has the right to do what they want to do? And I believe in the fact, when you sell a residential development and then all of a sudden have commercial that comes in on the outskirts of it and invades the dark sky way of life that I have, is wrong. So I think it needs to be looked at and be put in the code specifically somewhere that every effort will be made to be in coordination with the residential area.
George, with regard to strategy number five, I think the city needs to be a leader in converting our lighting to LED or dark sky compliant lighting. We have a lot of ball fields and places where we have non-dark sky compliant lighting, and as the budget allows, might be a more feasible way to approach it. But we need to be aggressively looking at replacing, even though those light bulbs aren't burned out right now or shot out, we should be looking at replacing them sooner rather than waiting until they die.
So if we were to add the term "as feasible" or "as appropriate" or "as determined by council during budget processes," something like that, obviously, it's not something that would happen across the board universally all at one time, but I think if you're looking for direction in here, it would need to be something that points to a specific type of criteria that triggers it through budget process or through redevelopment or through renovation of buildings, something that would tie it to that aspect.
I think you're hitting the nail on the head, and we'll leave it to staff to come up with some language, I think, that could work there. One additional item on page 71, under water quality goals and implementation strategies, strategy 1.2, discourage industrial development that has the potential to pollute the little Chino aquifer. I agree that we don't want to have development that pollutes the aquifer. I think, though, that this language is a little troublesome to me. I'd rather see it more from a code-based standpoint, direction, to look at our codes to make sure that development such as industrial doesn't pollute, that we have a process in place to evaluate that potential. Instead of flat-out saying to somebody, "Nope, you can't come here at all," I'd rather say, "How can we work within this confine to accomplish a goal?" You know, I just think having something that says discourage that type of use doesn't, it gives a very good out to somebody to make an argument to prevent a business that may have the way to address the pollution concerns. Again, not talking about somebody that's going to come building gigantic smokestacks in the middle of town, but industrial runoff is pollution, and under this, I think somebody could make a strong argument that, well, all industrial could be bad. Instead, we should be looking at ways to address industrial runoff so that it isn't causing a pollution.
Right.
So I'd like to see 1.2 be more focused in adopting codes or, well, yeah, adopting codes that address potential pollution issues, things of that nature.
Right. So you want to discourage the pollution, not the industry.
Right.
And right now, it could be viewed either way. I think it's easy enough to revise that to have that direction.
Thank you.
If consensus.
And since we're going back on the wildlife corridors, I talked with a lot of people at AGOT and some at Fish and Game, and they're saying that those tunnels really don't work when they make those tunnels. It's the bridges that go on. Unfortunately, the bridges cost millions of dollars to put over something, but it seems like that works a little bit better. I was talking with one citizen that was telling me that there's federal money out there to pursue wildlife corridors, and maybe part of this, a goal one, strategy 1.3, might be to look for funding from outside sources for wildlife corridors.
So, back to the water element, if we're ready to proceed with that one. One of the things that has occurred since the Planning Commission adoption of the edits that were submitted to you were a number of issues and presentations to city council by the city manager and the water resources division about new conditions or revised estimates of conditions. So the element has had another rewrite, and we did give you a redline copy, which I'm going to put up here and just talk a little bit about. I suspect that you're probably going to have a lot of interest from the folks in the audience as well as your own questions as we walk through this. So I'm going to keep staff comments relatively brief, and obviously, we have both the city manager and Leslie Grazer, who are intimately familiar with the process, available to help answer questions as we move along. One of the things that came up that was necessary as part of the review of this process by staff was to make sure that the information that's provided in each of the elements or each of the sections of the element are clear enough that they can correlate to the city's water management policy and to the other external forces which help control us. The state's water management plans are part of those things that we have to adapt to. We also had quite a number of, quite a number of changes to the statistics and to the accounting, water accounting, and you received most of that at a January workshop meeting that described those types of changes to you. And some of that will show up in here, and we will talk about that. One of the things that, I mean, just a little bit here so it's clearer. One of the things that we wanted to do with this element, and it's required by state statutes, is to discuss water that's available legally and physically, because they're two different things in the state of Arizona. You may have legal access to water and not physical access to it, or vice versa. In our particular case, we wanted very clear language that would make sure that anyone reading this element would understand that. So one of the things that the committee did that carried over from the previous plan, the 2003 plan, was to actually quote the ARS, the Arizona Revised Statutes, sections of the requirements for each element. I haven't really pointed that out previously, but each of the elements that are required by statute have this section, small box at the top at the beginning of each of the elements, that says just exactly what the statutes require us to address. We go well beyond that in talking about topics throughout each of the plans and each of the elements, beyond what the state required us to. The state had very minimum requirements and allowed communities to have a lot of flexibility in what they actually include in their plan.
Excuse me, George. The council only got changes to 10.2 in our packets. I don't see a change to 10.1 in the packet, and this is a little difficult to read.
Hmm, I apologize. Maybe this page fell off of the copying process. If you'd like, I can go through the specific changes.
That's better. If you could, I would appreciate that.
Will that work if we just talk through these things? Some of it was-
George, let me just add and reinforce what you said, which is not to, you know, which is not to skip going through what the changes are, but George did say, and I think it should be reinforced, that what you're seeing here is primarily a technical update. It is not a change from policy or anything like that. You recall, as George mentioned, in January of this year, Leslie Grazer, Water Resource Manager, gave a very detailed presentation to the city council, which was an update of the available water, or the water that we have in our portfolio. And so what the changes and edits that have been made that are redlined here are factual, they're current, and they're consistent. Today, on your three o'clock meeting agenda, there's the annual water withdrawal and use report. Those numbers are these numbers. These numbers are what was presented in January. It's all the same technical update. So that's pretty much in a nutshell. I think that by doing the comprehensive technical update and changing the numbers of their current, accurate, factual, and so forth, it gives a much better snapshot of where we are with respect to water availability, which then, and you'll see another edit here, which is reconciled to the number of additional future housing units that are supported by the water that we have in the portfolio, which then relates to the build-out of the community, which then relates to things like wastewater treatment plant capacity and so forth. So all of those elements have been brought together and are represented by, again, what we would term a technical update.
And one of the key purposes of that is to have consistent information across different plans or different documents, and that, this element, the updates to this element that occurred most recently, do that. They make the numbers here consistent with the information that you were provided in January, consistent with water policies and water programs that we have in place.
Okay, just to clarify, at the very bottom of the screen, the sentence, "Currently, there is no plan to achieve safe yield within the AMA," has been crossed out. That's no longer true? We now have a plan to achieve safe yield within the AMA?
We're going to find that on a following page. Safe yield was discussed in multiple paragraphs in the document, and so in September, the Department of Water Resources issued the fourth management plan. So I brought down their most current information into one location, which you'll see a little bit later. So we didn't drop the discussion of safe yield, you know, in its entirety. We cleaned up as to what our current condition is. And so if you can, I don't know if we want to move that far ahead or not. You want to move? It's right at the very bottom. So where we tried to recapture that discussion in the general plan was at the AMA, it says right in here. The Prescott AMA is not in safe yield, however, in September 27, 2014, the Department of Water Resources adopted, now we can move here, the Prescott AMA Fourth Management Plan, which stated, and this is a direct quote from the document, "ADWR has developed additional water demand and supply scenarios extending beyond 2025, which show that the Prescott AMA can achieve safe yield and maintain it for some years beyond 2025." And I cited where I took that from their document. This points to the need for continued local and regional management into the future. So we're not done yet by any means. We're going to be continuing to have these discussions. But I think it's important to bring forward the latest document out of the state, what they felt they were able to, in their large assessment of numbers and water activity demands, resource, all those components, what they developed, and by no means are we done. We have a lot more to do.
Okay. Thanks for that explanation.
So continuing through, as I think was clearly pointed out by the city manager a moment ago, a lot of the information that was revised and updated in the plan was specifically to bring numbers and specific criteria that have changed since the plan was last looked at by the committee or by Planning Commission up to date. And specifically, that includes accounting, how much water is available for development, how much water is available based on different types of processes such as treatment of effluent or groundwater availability or water production from the city's wellfields.
George, excuse me, I think it's important to reiterate when you make a comment like that. Prescott only has jurisdictional authority over what's available for Prescott. We don't have jurisdictional availability for what's available on the rest of the county or the AMA for that matter, just what Prescott has jurisdictional authority over.
That's correct.
And I think that's critical that we keep that in focus, especially when we're in public.
And one of the reasons we wanted to start this presentation with this map is to just indicate physically how much of the ground, how much of the AMA that Prescott has direct control over. So the city manager alluded a moment ago to recalculation of available water based on reservations of water, availability, calculations of water that would become available through recharge processes, and a number, and I apologize, I had a better version of this and I cannot find it at the moment. There shows a future housing, man? This is much easier to read. Thank you, sir. Future housing units that could be supplied by the available water that the city anticipates having, not necessarily that water that is reserved, but water that would become available. 22,142 additional housing units are potentially watered by the available legal water the city has. That would, at our typical two persons per household, provide an additional 40,000 population or 44,000 population to the city over the long term. One of the things that we talked about relatively early on in the process, our land use element, estimated somewhere between 80,000 and 90,000 as a maximum number occupation, you know, of population for the city, long-term, with our 2% growth rate factored in and hard boundaries that we know of that exist that would prevent us growing in certain directions. The national forest, nearby communities, Prescott Valley and Chino Valley both create boundaries where we will stop growing. All of these numbers come together in a very close approximation for a total size of the community, and that could be something that occurs in 40 years, 50 years, or further out. There is no assumption that our growth rate's going to increase. There's no assumption that we're going to hit this maximum population number in the near future.
Yep.
So just wanted to point out that this actually supports the other data in the plan that you've already looked at.
Mayor and council, this is a very important table in the general plan. You know, what this table shows is the top part, which is physically available water. As George mentioned, the distinction being made between physically available, that is what can be, what can be accessed today as we sit here. 9,671 units at two persons per household. Add that, you know, double that and add it to our 40,000 population, and that's about 60,000, a population of 60,000. Add the Big Chino project at the bottom, and the build-out population's more like 84, 85,000. That certainly indicates the scale and the importance, impact, whatever word we want to use, of the Big Chino project for the city of Prescott. If it never gets built, if that water is never accessed, again, it's physically, excuse me, legally available at the present time but not physically available, but it's never accessed, then we're looking at a build-out population based upon known water supplies, physically available water supplies, and any others that might come to bear in the future, about, you know, 60- future, about, you know, 65,000, 60,000.
Thank you, city manager. I think it's also important, always when you're talking about these numbers, housing units not only includes, you know, the houses out there with yards and everything, a housing unit includes all those units that are being built in your retirement communities throughout Prescott that seems to be a demographic shift from single-family residential units, like you'd find typically over on Mount Vernon, to where now you have a whole bunch of people clustered in a big box housing unit, and maybe called Touchmark, or it may be called Los Fuentes, or it may be called, you know, there's a bunch of them here. Those are all housing units, and those are all contemplated in this type of number. So, you know, we need to keep that in focus for the public.
Definitely. This is not just single-family homes on separate lots. It includes all types of residential dwelling units. The remainder of the element contains a number of similar modifications, I'll give you that back, sir. Thank you. Similar modifications to terminology. Again, we're trying to keep it in line with the city's water policy and with the management plans by the state. That language is important for clarity. When someone is looking at a state document, they step over and they look at the city's water policy, and then they open the general plan, the terminology should be consistent enough that they're not going to be confused by the information. So, there were some changes there, clarification changes. And there were a few changes to the goals. Of the elements that were reviewed by the general plan committee, the water resources element probably had the most background information provided to them prior to their actions on it. So, the changes that were made are very much in line with the city's policies and plans that were in place at the time they looked at it. The changes that you've seen identified today and in the document that we gave you with the red lines, strike threes and underlines, are more recent changes, but they're technical changes, as pointed out by the city manager. They don't change the concepts or the intent of the element, nor do the changes to the goals and strategies remove something that was inserted by the committee. We believe most of these changes simply make it clearer or include better information that became available after the committee was finished with the document.
I've got a question, George, maybe for the city manager or for Leslie, in the fact that, does it show in here, in the terminology of a development coming into the community that's bringing water with them, based upon the language from the state, what does that really mean when it comes to the general plan, or how does that show up? In other words, there's a process out there, it's called paper water, that seems to be a question in my mind and other people's mind, that if somebody wanted to transfer water credits, say, from eastern Arizona to Prescott, Arizona for a development, how does that work, and how would that show up in our general plan?
Okay, for your example, we, by state law, we wouldn't be able to do that. What we could access locally here is either surface water claims that would be severed and transferred to the city, or irrigation grandfathered rights that would be extinguished and pledged to the city. So, within this document, we weren't forecasting picking up any of those kind of water resources. I don't think that's what the general plan does. So, we're not, we didn't do any forecasting for additional supplies within the numbers that you see.
That's fine. I just wanted the clarity of that.
And I think that, my recollection is that the Water Issues Committee is going to be talking about policy of accepting water rights along the lines of what Leslie mentioned at an upcoming meeting.
Okay. Because I think that's a sleeping dog out there somewhere, and I think that needs to be addressed at some point.
I would point out, there's nothing in the water resources element in the general plan that would discourage a developer from doing that, provided they can meet the requirements under state statutes that allow that transfer of water.
I think that's what I wanted to hear, is the general plan doesn't discourage it, but it's more hinged on state law of ADWR.
That, and the fact that it's completely unpredictable from a planning perception, we can't really predict how many people would bring water from another area within the AMA through that process. So, it's something that's not discouraged, but it's not necessarily encouraged either, for that very same reason.
Thank you.
George, 10.3.1, treated effluent supplies, just real quickly. Craig, do you think it would be appropriate, based on our conversations about centralization, for us to rewrite this section a little bit, to reference our direction and move forward in that area? Right now, it's talking about following a five-year capital plan to bring SunDog up to the A+. We just opened the new portion of the airport wastewater treatment facility. I think heading in the direction of centralization is the direction we want to go, and something we're going to pursue in the next 10 years.
I think all indications, councilmen, are that we will be going, upon council approval, we'll be going to central, you know, single-plant treatment and so forth, so we'll take a look at updating this section.
That concludes most of the issues that we wanted to point out, as far as the revision of this particular element, and perhaps it may be a good time to see if we have comments from the public in attendance today. Thank you.
Comments from the public?
Hoyer. Morning, Mayor and Council, Leslie Hoy. These aren't really comments, I have a few questions, or three questions, is it appropriate to ask? Okay, actually, one of them was on page 72 of the water quality section, but there wasn't any opportunity to ask that. I forgot to bring my copy of the general plan up. On page 72, under the lakes' goals and implementation strategies, goal two, strategy 2.3, I was wondering if we could include something about proper disposal of dog dew and horse manure, because on the, we know our creeks are impaired, and I'm on the new, the reactivated watershed improvement council, and that is one of the main, or it is a very significant problem. And I know it's kind of a touchy issue, asking people to pick up after their animals, but that is something that we really need to work on. And we, in this section, it mentions pollution, pollutant management strategies, but in specifically pesticides and chemicals. I think it is important for people to know that we need to include picking up after our animals. So, you might want to consider that.
Thank you for bringing that up, Leslie, but to be very candid, we, I think that we really need to get to our strategic plan, because, for example, some of the things that we're having with water quality in both the reservoirs has to do with such things as the rodeo, and all the manure that ends up down there, because of all the privileges, some people choose to use and exercise, but the taxpayer ends up having to pay the cost to clean that up. So, I do think at some point, we need to get off the dime on the strategic plan and put the teeth of the general thought process in a strategic direction.
Sure. And I'm also looking at this from the point of public education, because everybody can take responsibility for helping to solve this problem. Okay.
Sorry, to that, Craig, go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to suggest, I think we could reword this section. This section is talking about stormwater runoff quality. The city has permits, federal and state permits for water quality. I think we, or at least I would suggest rewording this along the lines of implement practices supporting achievements of NPDES and MS4 water quality requirements. That's what we have to do. Regardless of what these words say, we are held accountable for water quality, and it's the implementation, as the councilman points out here, that if we're implementing practices supporting it, then in a strategic plan, we'd be more specific about what that means.
Thank you.
And I would concur with that. I think that's a broader statement that would incorporate what you're bringing up, but allow us to move towards more finite details in our education front.
Well, the only problem with just putting in the numbers of those requirements is, then it becomes pretty, I mean, nobody's going to know what that means, really. So, it'd be good to have a little bit of extra language, if you could, describing what that really means to the public, because otherwise, they don't know what those numbers are.
And it could be referencing those requirements to include with a description.
That would work. Okay, thanks. Okay, then I have a question on page, it's in this edited section on page 81, I'm having a little bit of trouble matching this up this morning, under 10.3, future growth and water demand, that, can you just explain why a commitment of groundwater to non-residential uses was crossed out under there?
One of the things that occurred at the time of the water mining declaration by the state was that we were locked into a permitted amount of groundwater, and no new groundwater commitment is allowed through the process. So, there is no groundwater commitment to new residential that can occur. Those subdivisions that were preliminarily platted and that had water associated with groundwater are, in fact, already accounted for and established. Whether they're built or not is another story, but they're already accounted for.
Okay, but here's a question I have, is, I've heard in the past that when businesses come and get additional water, then that isn't counted, that isn't, that's under different rules, and I'm, and which can be a problem, because it takes us farther away from safe yield when we commit water to businesses. And I just wondered if taking that out had something to do with that, but it may not.
I don't believe it does. I believe what you're referring to is that we account for water usage by most commercial uses, by a percent change or a percent increase in the amount of water that's allocated to residential uses, because the businesses are assumed to be covered by that.
Okay, so, it makes our GPCD go up, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I was going to say, if we can't, if we can't commit groundwater to non-residential uses, then why recognize it as a challenge? I think that's the point.
Okay, well, I was just trying to understand what was going on there. I'm not sure I do, but thank you. Okay, on page 84, and right above goal four, it's strategy 3.4. One more. And I'm looking under, right above goal, point four, right there, okay? And habitat was taken out there, and I'm wondering why?
Well, the city-owned lakes were, by vote, that they were acquired for two purposes, recreation and water supply. They were not, they were not acquired for developing habitat. That may be something which occurs, but they're operated for the purposes for which they were obtained, which were water supply and recreation.
However, those are big birding areas, and the birds require habitat, and so, wouldn't we, as a community, want habitat values in there?
Well, that's a council policy decision, but again, the original purpose is quite clear, recreation and water supply, and that's it. List of two, one, two, and there they are.
Apparently, someone wanted habitat in there, or it wouldn't have been there in the first place.
Well, perhaps, but the point, the point being that, if the city, as a matter of policy, operates the lakes for different purposes than the original purposes or one of the original purposes, and I can tell you which one it's going to be, it's going to be water supply, is going to be diminished. And we have made long-term projections pledging certain water supply from those reservoirs. There is a balance, and there is an inherent conflict, certainly between water supply and recreation. If, as a matter of policy, habitat is thrown into that equation, then there's even more of a competition or tension there. That is a policy determination for the council, but certainly from the staff perspective, that was struck to make it consistent with the purpose for which the lakes were acquired, or purposes.
Okay, I understand, but I don't like it. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Thank you, Leslie. Next?
My name is Doug McMillan. I live in Prescott, so I'm speaking as a resident and also as a retired civil engineer. Try to make this brief. I just want to talk about paper water versus real water, the real hydraulics that's going on into the ground, and sustainability of groundwater and solutions for that. All groundwater pumping is either from two components, only storage or flow through capture. And pumping from storage has an expiration date to it, just like taking water out of a swimming pool. Capture is okay if you're willing to decrease the downstream flow. As a result of the pumping in the little Chino, groundwater levels are now going down, according to the hydrograph, about three feet per year, and the groundwater level now is only about 15 feet above the top of the volcanic unit. So, that means in about five years, at the current rate, the decline will, with this decline, the confined unit will no longer be confined. And to give you an analogy of that, if you go out in the street and you don't see water, but you have water in a water main, and it's under pressure, it's confined. If you connect a, say, glass pipe into it and put it up vertically, you'd see the water rising under pressure. Well, in essence, that water level is now 15 feet above that pipe, and when it becomes unconfined, then the water level is within the pipe. So, that's the analogy I'm trying to draw, and that has repercussions as far as storage and hydraulic capacity in the system. And as far as capture, we all know that Del Rio is, flow is decreasing, decline, been declining. So, paper water does not match up with real water hydraulics. With the groundwater allowance that's in the city's water portfolio of about 9,500, that's essentially legalized groundwater mining, so with that, we can never really have a water balance, or is the term, it's misnomer or misleading term that's used, is safe yield. To have a real water balance that is sustainable, then we need to improve our recycle rate and its effectiveness, and supplement the natural recharge with better utilization of the local hydrologic cycle, which is only 2%. Only 2% of our precipitation recharges our aquifers now for various reasons, because, mainly because of the dams, and also because of our clay soils. Recycle, we need more units to be seared, definitely. There's a fair amount of units out there in the city that receive water better and not seared. And with that occurring, that would increase the recycle rate, and the recycle rate is really important, especially when you have a hydraulic connection between the recycle, between the recharge point and where water's being between the recycle, between the recharge point and where water's being drawn out in the well field, because you can get the power of compounding, the 50% recycle rate, when you have a hydraulic connection can actually ultimately result in 100% increase in the water supply. But we don't really have that now, based on my calculations, and I'd be very happy if somebody else could check this, and if I'm wrong, I'd like to know. But based on just basic hydrologic equations and data from ADWR, it looks like the time of travel between the recharge point out the airport and the well field is about 70 years. And, let's see, something that I thought would be good, if some of this effort was actually applied back on paper to existing residents rather than just all to new growth, because that would really help as far as actual, really creating a water balance and sustainability. And lastly, I've always been an advocate of macro rainwater harvesting, and that is a topic that I could speak on for a couple hours. Basically, it's utilizing water that otherwise would evaporate and getting it out to North Granite Creek, where it used to recharge before the dams were built. And the latest ADWR report shows that 70% of our natural recharge is occurring in places like Granite Creek. Granite Creek is really the heart of the whole system, and the dams are kind of like cutting off the blood flow to the heart, you know? And I understand that the lakes are very important to the community and very valued, but it deals with this conflict that Craig was talking about. Last summer, in July, August, and September, we had 5,000 acre feet flowing by the USGS gauge upstream of Watson, about 5,200 acre feet. That's a lot of water. And I think, based on the lower USGS gauge, it was about 1,000 that was released to the north. So that mean, and I know a lot of that water was sent over to Willow, and unfortunately, there's a whole lot of evaporation that occurs in the lakes, about five feet per year. So I'm just bringing up these, these concepts, the ideas to consider about reality versus paper and these conflicts of choices and how I know in the future, if it ever came down to the Little Chino was really evident to everyone that it's really in trouble, then that would become the first priority. So we need to think long-term and think ahead. So thank you for allowing me to give these comments to you.
Where do you, where do you suggest that, that enter into the general plan?
Well, the general plan is all based on this paper water. And so what I'm saying is, long-term, we need to think about real water as opposed to also paper water. And that's the main thing, that's the main connection.
Yeah. Comment?
What Mr. McMillan is pointing out is certainly appropriate input, input for a long-term water management plan, where, you know, we'll be looking at different strategies and so forth, addressing many of the points that he has made.
Okay. Do you see changes?
Not necessarily in the general plan, but more of the implementation plans, strategic plans, long-term water management plan.
Okay. Anyone here? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Looks like your number's up.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. I just want to speak to a couple of issues. Number one, on the 9.6 regional cooperation. Part of that is the Central Yavapai Metropolitan Planning Organization. And I know that Councilman Chris Kugnio is on the, on that committee. I would just like to point out that there is a wealth of opportunity for all of us in the central Arizona area to work together cooperatively to achieve great things. And I think that what the 2040 Regional Transportation Plan is one example of that. Just for information, public comment on that plan will end on April the 6th, and then there'll be a technical advisory committee meeting on April the 9th to review some of those, the public comments. And then on April the 15th, there's going to be the final approval of that plan. And I would urge all of you to attend that meeting on April the 15th. It's really going to be interesting, because not only will the plan be presented and approved, but Arizona Game and Fish is going to be doing a presentation. And Chris, it's really interesting, you and I have the same problem logically. Logically-
I have a lot of problems.
Well, this one's, this one isn't too serious. Logically, it should be Arizona Fish and Game, it'd be alphabetical, and I always make that mistake, but in Arizona, it's Arizona Game and Fish. I also would just like to underscore the fact that with the wildlife corridors and the open space, natural area, whatever you want to call it, if we do it in a very planful way, it has great ramifications. We've heard that there could be water recharge, rejuvenation of our natural resources. It can help the quality of the water as well as preserving our wildlife. And one good thing I did find out is that I, too, have been talking to the Game and Fish people. And Councilman Arnold, I don't know if you were responsible for me suddenly getting a lot of help from them, but thank you if you were. Regarding the overpasses, they are the only thing or the only means of mitigation that the pronghorn will use. The pronghorn will not use underpasses. However, deer will use them, bobcats, javelina, there are a lot of other species. And what I've learned from Ray Schweinberg, who is with Game and Fish, is that they have a wealth of information, and it's species-specific intervention. So for some species, one means is good, for another, another is needed. And they also have information as to where this intervention is needed. So we just need to all get at the table and do our planning together for the benefit of this community. And if we show that there's widespread support for this effort, yes, there is federal mandate when they put in highways under MAT 21 to provide some sort of mitigation for local communities. So federal funding is an option. So thank you all. April 15th, 5 to 6, County Board of Supervisors meeting. I think it's going to be a really good time.
Okay, as far as the general plan, do you see a need for any language change under 9.6?
No, I just want to, I just want to commend you on the language that you have. Thank you very much.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Mayor? You know, I think you're absolutely right on this regional cooperation. I'm glad we have Simpo to look through that, because there's still a lot of old garbage and old arguments out there that we got to get past. Got in a conversation with a councilwoman from Chino, and she was still very angry that we're taking their water, you know? So no matter how that works out, and when we look at these, these corridors, I think we want to get something that works, and game and fish, fish and game. They were saying they actually had to train the animals to use these, but they were trainable to do that. So, and I love seeing the pronghorn running around out there. I'd hate to see something where we actually just cut them off and-
Yeah, and we'll lose them, just like we lost the Prescott herd. Imagine Prescott without a pronghorn herd. It's really sad.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Someone else? Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Sandra Smith. I'm at 701 White's Bar. This, I don't know even who this would go to, but, and it may sound like a dumb question, but in connection with the lady's comment about the animal waste, is there some way that the city could collect that and use it as fertilizer? Because it makes great fertilizer.
We're looking for volunteers.
No, seriously. I mean, especially from the rodeo. Cattle manure, if you just age it a little bit, like for the next spring, use it for fertilizer for your golf courses, your parks, where your baseball fields and stuff.
Well, we are, the city is working with Prescott Frontier Days regarding the rodeo grounds, and I'm sure that we're going to have to implement some, some different practices there because of the water quality concerns in Miller Creek and so forth. So I think that that's a pretty good example of what we will be doing as a city.
Well, that would be the specific plan.
Right.
Okay.
We've taken volunteers at that time.
How do you change the hearts and minds of men? I mean, we can't get people to pick up all the poo-poo on the courthouse square. You know, when you're walking through the creeks of Prescott and our downtown greenways trails, you know, that collects and collects, and then we get a flood that picks it up and takes it all downstream. So it's a very good point.
Yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Barbara Jacobson. I just have a quick comment. And I've talked to the city before about this, but it doesn't seem to have changed. When y'all make changes to that general plan on the website, and I'm sitting there reading it on my phone as we're here, it doesn't show up. Like, I didn't know we went from 13,000 housing units to 22,000, and the public doesn't have a chance to even think about the changes or prepare for them. So I don't know where all those red lines and marks came from, but they need to show up. I mean, I'm assuming as a person of the public that the most updated changes are on your website, but they're not. They're not. So I would like to see that.
We post the changes that council's going to look at as part of the agenda for council, and once they've made the changes and formally have approved those changes, we can update the document on the website. But we don't want to update that document, because the changes haven't been made.
Okay, so all those red lines are still in process?
They're in process, but they're available for you to look at by looking at the-
So you have to look in another place?
At the agendas for the council meeting.
And the entire general plan is under the agenda also?
The sections to be discussed are attached to those agendas.
Okay, so we're going from 13 to 22,000 housing units approval? Guessing? I mean, is that what this is about today, that that gets approved as a possibility?
It's information that's provided, it's based on new data that came before council in January, again, as part of our reaccounting of water. Yes. That will be changed.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor, can I just make one more comment, just on the whole regional cooperation kind of side of things? I went to this kind of informal meeting along the Verde River that I got invited to, and there was a lot of public officials from up here, there were from down there. And as we were going to this, we're walking by fields that were flood-irrigated during the middle of the day. And we get down to the Verde, and we're sitting there, and a mayor from a city down there actually said, it's amazing how much you can get done sitting around a fire, talking with each other. He said, you know, "We can't keep blaming Prescott. They're doing a lot, and we're really doing nothing. We need to change our ways, too." So there is hope. I think people see water as a real issue coming up. If we can just keep putting the right people in office, that will, will work together and achieve these goals. So don't, don't lose heart. I think, I was amazed when I heard someone down there say, "It's not just Prescott's fault," because that's all we've really heard.
Okay, it's-
It's because of past, people keep beating it in their head that we're not the bad guy.
That's a comment.
Well, the current people that are here now, it is a comment.
Yeah.
Because regionally, you got to tell them that instead of you standing tall on the box of crackers, it's, we're not the crumbs, you know? Those people down there flood irrigation in the middle of the day and sucking water out of the river, and nobody's holding them to question. And now they're starting to, you know, see the fact that our, our conservation and our mitigation and the things that we're doing make a difference. They need to do something on their own turf.
Good. Okay, any comments from the council? Okay, George, Aaron Feyman, that's a good job. And we'll see you again, when?
We have one more element I'd like to talk about, if you have just a moment.
Today?
There are actually two additional elements that we haven't talked about this morning. One is economic development. A lot of that information was provided and reviewed by both the Chamber of Commerce participation and our own economic development folks with the city. So very good data was inserted into the plan based on reviews by those two bodies. And the last element, last regular element is the community quality element that really talks about the various aspects of our community that we wanted to brag about. It's not one required by the statutes. The city chose in 2003 to put that element in, to talk about things like the, our natural environment, cultural assets, the historic downtown, those things that draw people to us, either to live here or to visit as tourists. Those types of things were important to keep in the plan, and the committee this time around wanted to keep those in. In fact, they added a little bit of additional information regarding our police and fire services, because they felt it was important for those, those two services in particular, the life safety related services, to have a mention in the general plan. The last element of the plan is element 13. It's actually not really an element. It is the amendment process for the plan. Once council has adopted the plan, and once it goes to the voters and it's been ratified by the voters, there's a specific process that has to be followed under state statutes to amend the plan. If it's a very minor amendment, it's something that comes through you, and you see those pretty regularly, rezonings, it's a very common occurrence. But for very large changes to the plan, very impactful changes or very large-scale changes to the land use map, there is a much bigger and complicated process that's set out by state statute. Statutes allow the local government to set the criteria, the trigger points, for that to occur, and we've done that. We did that in 2003, and the committee chose not to make any amendments to that 2003 process. So that's element 13 of the plan. When you get to that point and look at it, it really is talking about how to amend it once you've finished this process. And if you have any questions for staff, we'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. I see David Maurer from the chamber. David, any, any comments, questions that you would have? Okay. Okay. I guess that's it.
Mayor, just real quickly, are we, are we going to go through these sections at a point, or are we just going to?
At your discretion. If you have specific questions or comments you'd like us to, to follow through, our plan, again, as I mentioned earlier, is to bring you back those requested changes, especially the significant changes, or those things you had questions for more information or requests for more information at your next and last scheduled workshop, number four. If you have something that you'd like to see us change or talk about at that next workshop, please let us know, and we will make sure that's part of our presentation to you next time around.
And you don't want to hear about it now, because I have some changes to section 11.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's all right. This is the chair.
Okay. Page 85, section 11.3.1, under Commerce and Industry. Fourth paragraph down says, "Industrially-zoned land is readily available in Prescott. However, available industrial buildings over 20,000 square feet do not currently exist." I think this, part of that sentence after "however" could become obsolete in the next five years or during the period of time that this general plan covers, and we should probably just stop the sentence right at, just say industrially-zoned land is readily available in Prescott, period.
But that is the big problem right now. I mean-
Right now it is, but not necessarily always in the future. So we may have land where there's a rezoning, and a large building could be built.
And Mayor, part of the problem is the word "currently." If you read it today, "currently" means today. If you read it three years from now, "currently" means the day three years from now. So, you know, either, to make it more accurate, you would probably put in "as of the ratification date of, of the general plan," but it, that just sort of reflects in a snapshot of the time rather than a, a planned statement.
I just didn't want to send a message to prospective industrial users that we have too many limitations and we can't try to accommodate them somehow.
So end the sentence or remove the word "currently"?
I would just delete the half of the sentence that starts with "however, available industrial buildings over 20,000 square feet do not currently exist."
Very good.
And just a comment, Mayor, you know, we talk about the shifting demographic in Prescott. I think a lot of that is directly tied to economic development, because it's really hard for that working-age people to, to make a good living that way. So trying to push forward, and I think this council has, with the addition of our Economic Development Director and being memberships and greater regional cooperations, we're trying to get to that point. But, you know, it goes back to that old thing where you, someone comes in, you say, "Welcome to Prescott. I hope you brought your own money." So if we can somehow get by that, that'd be great.
So George, what, what language, what do you recommend be changed? So George, what language, what do you recommend be changed? Just some word--
Yeah, just delete part of that sentence that refers to "however, available industrial buildings over 20,000 square feet do not currently exist."
I agree with that.
Leave the part of the sentence that says industrially-zoned land is readily available in Prescott.
Period.
So we'll just strike through that, and that will be removed from the final draft.
Or we could put in something like, "We encourage the construction of buildings 20,000-foot and greater," or something to that effect.
Just leave it alone.
Okay.
So you'll work with Jane?
Yeah, thank you.
And what else? Charlie?
One more on page 89, goal two, which, goal two states, "Position Prescott as a tourist destination." I would like to add strategy 2.8, which would say, "Promote and enhance Prescott's recreational opportunities." Because recreation is a big reason we are a tourist destination. We mentioned a lot of other things that have to do with Prescott being a tourist destination, but we, here's a place where we really should mention recreational opportunities.
I would agree with that, as long as we don't include "how," that'll come in the strategic plan. But the idea, the conceptual idea, that that's who we are, you know, that may be part of our economic development.
Right.
Do you have that, George?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Charlie?
Mayor, page 86, strategy 2.3, promote the development of a more robust broadband services in partnership with service providers. Over the next 10 years, I think that the, we should pursue the development. Instead of just promote, we need redundancy, we need to expand broadband. I mean, clearly evident by what just took place a few weeks ago, where northern Arizona was without connectivity for hours. There is a movement statewide to do that, but I think it should be clear that we need to pursue in the next 10 years in order to stay viable for economic development, viable for a community, viable for public safety. The time has come upon us to deal with that issue.
You want to change the word "promote" to "pursue"?
Yep.
Is that what you're talking about? Is that doable?
And then, one is a broader statement. We focus several pages on the importance of education and educational opportunities, provide workforce training, which we all know is a key part of economic development. The one area that I don't see in here, and I think that we need to maybe think about how to incorporate it, we talk about business retention and expansion. Education within itself is an industry, a business, that we want to retain and expand upon. It's a major job creator, it's something that keeps people here, it provides the benefits to the region. If you look at Yavapai College's 10-year master plan, they're moving quite a bit of what they're looking at for the future to Prescott Valley. Now, while as a region, we'll all benefit from that, I think we need to make sure we're clear that the expansion of educational opportunities within the community is also of value in an industry we need to support.
And Councilman, you recall the presentation by Dr. Frank Ayers, they have a tremendous impact, and in many respects, it's under the radar, you don't really think about it.
Well, in our economic development plan, we consider education as one of the legs on the stool.
Absolutely.
So how you want to inject it here?
Yeah, and within this, we talk a lot about its importance to the other legs, but we don't identify it as a leg well in the plan. And then my last comment, and this is on the definitions page, 112. Just through some initial research, I think we need to look at how we define wildland-urban interface. Right now, it's the boundary where development meets undeveloped areas, including the Prescott National Forest. More broadly accepted definition is that it's the transition zone between unoccupied land and human development. And it even gives a distance, but I think it's reasonable as a community that we look at a majority of Prescott is with itself wildland-urban interface. So if we can expand upon that definition, I think for somebody from the outside reading this, they need to understand that crucialness to our plan.
Very good.
Thank you.
Just one more comment with regard to the maps at the end. I think it would be helpful if we had a map that showed, one of these maps could show the annexation boundaries that are agreed upon among Prescott Valley, Chino Valley, and City of Prescott.
We had a little bit of that discussion at the first workshop about amending either the land use plan or the growth area plan and indicating those boundaries on there. And I think I got a consensus from you to do that, so those maps will be reflective of that conceptually-agreed-upon boundary.
Good, okay, thank you.
And that would be to the north and the east.
Right.
Mayor, on that issue, I don't know if it's something that you want to put in the general plan or not, but it should be acknowledged or recognized that that agreement, I guess, amongst the municipalities isn't necessarily enforceable, since annexation's a legislative act. One legislative body can't bind another legislative body to not, to do something or not do something. So it's kind of important to note that if one municipality decides to sort of go rogue and violate the agreement, there's really no way to force them, other than calling up the militia and rounding up the armies. But seriously, I think that's important to note in that, that that agreement is sort of an informal or, it's more of a cooperation agreement rather than a binding, yeah.
And I haven't seen anything, at least in my tenure here, that there's any effort on anybody's part to change that, but--
And just towards that cooperation, the town of Prescott Valley included the boundary in their land use map to indicate their future expansion. So they're showing in their own general plan that they intend to accept and agree to that proposal.
Okay. Anything else? Last call. Round it.